I'd ask if you'd stand if you're able and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, everybody, and welcome. Next item on our agenda is, does anyone wish to make a comment on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, I will move on. We'll go to student representative.
Good, how are you? For past events, the second annual Alumni Battis Bash was held at the Town Hall on September 28th. Members of the MHS Student Council Executive Board were in attendance prior to the event to help set up decorations made by our delegation and worked the door. On Saturday, October 4th, MHS held their annual lock-in, an event hosted and coordinated by the Student Council Executive Board. This is an event where students spend the night within the school, split into rooms, where they learn leadership skills, play games, and set goals for upcoming events. There were about 240 students in attendance with the theme being "Discover Your Leadership." The students had a great night and were able to obtain amazing skills. On October 6th, members of MHS volunteered at the Oak Point Yard Sale as money was raised to go towards scholarships for students at Middleborough High. On Wednesday, October 9th, the first MHS Unified Basketball game was held, and the team was recognized as being a Special Olympics National Banner School and on the ESPN Honor Roll. All fall sports teams were in attendance, and the Unified Team was able to get their first win of the season. The Class of 2020 held their second annual Touch a Truck fundraiser last Sunday, October 13th. This fundraiser was very successful for the senior class and provided the community with an amazing event. This past Tuesday, on October 15th, the Student Council Executive Board attended the Fall Town Meeting, some members counting votes while others provided childcare to the parents in attendance. Yesterday, on October 16th, all members of Middleborough High from grades 11 through from 9 to 11 took the PSATs while seniors worked on their college application process. This week is Homecoming Week, therefore students of MHS have dressed up for the Spirit Days. Tuesday was Under the Sea Day, Wednesday was Meme Day, and today was Grow Fit Day. All fall sports have also had their homecoming games. Many teams were very successful. For upcoming events, tomorrow is Sage and Pride Day as MHS gets ready for their homecoming football game on Saturday, where each class will ride on a decorated float to Battis Field. The dance will follow from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. on Saturday night, hosted by the Middleborough High School Student Council. Tomorrow, the Class of 2024 will be coming to Middleborough High to learn about MHS and tour the school. Following these tours, an open house will be held for all families on Wednesday, October 23rd. The Annual Charity Dinner will be held tomorrow, October 17th. The money raised will be going towards the Jimmy Fund for cancer research in support of the faculty members at MHS and the young children suffering within our community. All members of Middleborough High are encouraged to attend this dinner. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Natalia. Does anyone have any questions for Natalia?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, please.
I think, I think thank yous in order. Two nights that the Student Council did get help from. It's part of the process that we, we get to run our government by here in town, so you provide a great service. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, please. I just wanted to talk about tomorrow's tours. Now, there's 200 and some odd students coming up from the eighth grade. How do we possibly provide all those tours for all those students, Natalia?
There was students selected and invited to give the tours. There was members from the Student Council Executive Board, the class boards, and members who had, who were orientation leaders at the Student Council lock-in.
And they'll each take a small group?
Yes.
And walk them through the high school on a prescribed trail and, and let them know all about the high school?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Do they all get told they only have to go to the high school for a semester? So that's good. Any other questions? Natalia, thank you very, very much. Does any school committee member have anything they wish to bring up? Mr. Givenoni?
Mr. Chair, there's, there's an item further down our consent agenda for a donation that has been made in order to go to the Berkland School for the amount of $2,000. And this isn't the first time that we've seen contributions like this from this group, this family. And it's very appreciative that they're doing this. Well over and above everything else that they do, and they do it to help out with a relative who teaches in our district, so it's not even directly related to their own student, it's more to help out in the community that they live in. So I think it's just a wonderful piece there, and like I said, it's not the first time we've seen that name, so I really appreciate that. I know we're gonna do it down at the back end, but I just always like to see those things. $2,000 is a lot of money.
Great job. Anybody else have anything? Mr. Rowe?
Mr. Chair, I get to attend the Class of 2020 Touch a Truck with my son and daughter, and you had to drag my son away kicking and screaming from that after he spent a couple hours there. But it was really, really nice to see all the businesses in the community, as well as the public works departments like Fire Department and so forth, and the police come out and helped the Class of 2020 with this Touch a Truck. And we've been to a lot in the area, and it's by far one of the best. So that was really awesome to see the community support that.
Mr. Rowe, did you have a particularly favorite truck?
Me? I'm always impressed they have an RV there that cooks food. So, and they're cooking food for you as soon as you walk in, it smells great.
That's great. Mr. Rowe? Uh, Mr. Oakley, excuse me.
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on what others have said. I got to witness the, the childcare that the Student Council put together. I wanted to use this as another opportunity to say how awesome Anna DeBona is, the Vice Chair of Student Council. She displayed some real leadership when all the troops showed up, and she was telling people, you know, where to go, how we want to run it. She had all the logistics worked out. It was just really cool to see. It's been a long, it hasn't, it hasn't been that long, but it's been a while since I was, you know, her age, and I don't think, I think she displays way more competence and leadership than I ever did at her age. So it's just cool to see the next generation doing some really cool stuff.
Thank you. Anybody else? I do want to make, mention that I attended the Alumni Bash, and for those who remember, we met members of the Alumni Foundation a couple of months ago, and it was a lot of fun. They did a really nice job, and so I want to thank them for doing that and really putting everything in gear and starting it. You know, sadly, it wasn't at Battis because of the triple E, got moved to Town Hall, but it was very nice, and they ran an excellent program. Lot of local bands, a lot of alumni members playing in those bands, so it was a lot of fun. It was a really good time.
Mr. Chair, through their first year efforts.
They have now providing $7,000-plus dollars to high school faculty and staff. They'll have special projects they'd like to do within the school in the school year, so that is their, that's their goal, is to help out current students as part of a group of former students, so thank you.
No problem. Anybody else? Then I'll turn it over to Mr. Catino. Mr. Catino, come on down.
Good to see you today, sir. It's good to be seeing you. So, just to let everybody know, this is my new look. My hair's fallen out, so I decided to shave the beard off rather than have it fall into my food. So, it's just, that was a, that was more of a practical decision. So, current, actually, it's current treatment's going pretty well, just, you know, update everybody on that. Feeling pretty good right now, so. Glad that our negotiations for the contracts are done. That was good to finally wrap all of that up for this time around. We had to vote for our ESPs today, so we're ready to move forward with that. It's nice to see the high school getting more and more coming into play, and last night's storm let us all know up at the high school why we want to move into a new building for the first time ever. I had water on the floor in my room, it was leaking through from Mr. Wilbur's room directly above me because he had like a giant lake of water that had come through, but with the wind blowing and everything, that water finds every single crack that exists. And it's amazing how much can come right through the bricks and everything. So the building's old, it's definitely seen its better days, and I like to see the new one going up. They've got, they've got some of the stuff there to start attaching the facade on the outside of the academic wing, so it looks like they're gonna be able to start putting up the outside walls pretty soon on that. I'm not sure exactly when that'll start, but it looks like it's gonna be coming, so can't wait. Anyway?
Well, thank you, and thank you for letting us know about the ESPs. So appreciate that.
I know that you'll be voting on the ESP contract at the next meeting.
Correct.
But I will have my next treatment on that day, so I won't be here for the next meeting, but I'll go online and take a look at what happens.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Frank Yan. Beth Evans, who also took a role in that ESP contract.
Well, she's our negotiations chair, so she took a role in all of the negotiations, cafeteria, the ESPs. Actually, she ran the meeting today because I was preparing for the, for the grievances, so everything's going well with that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn over the next section of superintendent for his report.
Chair, thank you, members of the committee, members of the audience. I'd like to call Mr. Paul Branigan down. I know Natalia had mentioned a number of things about Homecoming Week, but he's come to sort of feature some of the changes that were made this year, the need for those changes, Welcome, Mr. Branigan. Good morning.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to come down and to share with you the final, final schedule for Homecoming. We have probably had more drafts of a Homecoming schedule than I think we've ever had before, and just when you talk about it takes a village between the athletic director and his leadership in making sure that all of these athletic events could happen to the Park Department, to the school district, to everybody, to make sure that all these things went off without a hitch. We're really excited about this weekend, so this week has been filled with games. We had girls soccer down on Battis Field and, of course, field hockey, both JV and Varsity One, it was shout-outs on both teams, and what a great time it was down there today. Tomorrow, as Natalia had shared, is our charity dinner that will be held at 6:00 p.m. We invite all of you to come, and it's a, it's a all-you-can-eat spaghetti dinner, so and all the money that gets raised goes to the Jimmy Fund. And it was really a lot of thought put into really the, the organization that we wanted to sponsor, and the student body, and especially through the work of the Student Council that decided that they really wanted to make sure that for all the people in our school and community members that are impacted by cancer, that it was a way for them to pay it forward and to make sure that we were, let them know we're thinking about them. So we invite all of you to come to that. And then on Saturday, we have solidified the plan for Saturday, that the boys soccer team will be taking on, their game begins at 10:00 a.m., and then the football team will go, begin at 2:00 p.m. at Battis Field. And then the parade will begin about 1:15, make their way down to Battis Field. We invite all of you to be judges, if you would like, at 1:15 down at the Herring Run, if you would like. We'd love to have you down there to judge the floats, and then the game will start at 2:00, and then, of course, the dance. Historically, our dances have always been 8 to 11, but the student body decided that they wanted to have it start earlier, which was something that we were very happy to hear that they would, they liked that, so the dance will be 7 to 10. And we were realizing the fact that by the time many of the students were getting out of a dance at 11, 11:30, 11:45, that it was really cutting it close by the time then that these students needed to be home to get off the roads because of curfews. So moving it to 10:00, it allowed for cleanup and students to go out to eat, whatever it is they're going to do, and to make sure that they're off the road at the time they need to be as well, so we're really happy with that. The one thing I do want to share is that today, as part of our Homecoming events, was the Unified Basketball game. I had a text message into Mr. Dyzel because I wanted to hear if we had won or not, so I'm not sure if we won the game today, but I will update you if I hear. But to bring, just aside for this, as Natalia had mentioned about the first Unified game that we were actually presented with the Honor Roll School, so we were one of 32 schools to be recognized as an Honor Roll School for inclusion, and then we were recognized as the one school in Massachusetts by ESPN for their Honor Roll, and we just received today the plaque from ESPN for, for their work, so a special thanks to Mr. Sylvia in particular for that, but that's kind of hot off the press today, so.
I just checked the Twitter feed, there's nothing on the Unified Sports, Mr. Branigan, but there is a nice shout-out from Lisa Perry, who's doing a great job with the field hockey team this year, and they're doing very well, I think for the first time maybe ever, they're a team that's going to go a long way hopefully in the tournament.
You did a wonderful job.
Question. I do want to say, Paul, that as usual, you guys do a really good job in Homecoming. I am thankful that, I feel a little sad for the seniors in the sense that this year is a little more difficult than what we had planned before. So, for example, last, last year, when we still had the fields intact behind the high school, we had essentially a whole jamboree day, which was field hockey, soccer, and soccer prior to the football game, so it just became this, this fun thing for everyone to do and to build up to for the football game, so. I know when we move to the new facilities, some of them we'll, we'll move to in the spring, and so, and all of them will move to next wall. It'll, it'll make for a different sort of Homecoming and a lot more fun. We're gonna have to figure out where the Homecoming Parade's gonna go. That'll be the only sort of change of things.
Exactly.
Exactly. But I also feel kind of bad for the seniors, but I think they, they understand, and we, you know, we want to make it as fun as we can for them.
They've been great. They've been rolling with the punches, and if I may, that I was out walking the site, and the senior rock is in a really wonderful location on the new, on the campus, and so the hope is just to try to get the Class of 20 out to that rock before they go, so they can actually do their official painting of the rock for their class to have, their Class of 20 of that campus as we transition into the new space, so just, it looks good.
Cross-country team also had a couple of dual meet wins this week, and a particular, the son of one of our school committee members, Paul Givenoni, set a track record, correct, in first place, and go ahead, you could brag about your son.
Well, I, I would like to say that Coach actually made the comment, "It was the most exciting you've ever seen in racing on cross-country." For three miles out of the, out of the 3.2 miles, there was an Abington runner in front of my son and Adam, and right, right coming out that last, they split right around him, and they just put on some speed and finished strong, and I'm, and I'm not saying that to say it, but they really did, and they came in, they looked good coming in, both of them. They were, they were in full stride. I was proud. My daughter also runs with the girls. Girls won both, boys won both. I mean, girls really dominated. They got first, second, fourth, and so it was a great, it was a great day.
Absolutely.
A lot of people there, too.
Yeah.
It was a great, it was a great force.
Yeah.
For the parade, if you think you can make it, and just so that way that you can RSVP, and we'll have a ballot ready for you, so thank you.
It's kind of a fun event. If you haven't been there as a school committee member and had the chance to do some voting, bring your children along with you if you have any, and they can sort of sit there and watch the floats go by, and each float for, per class tries to sort of change the voting, if you will, maybe, influence the voting, if you will, with, you know, candy maybe or something like that. It's not consistent with the wellness policy, but it, it is a fun event, and you make it back up in time to the Battis Field for the game, so. There's also, just to note, there's also a car show going on at the park on that day, so there'll be some, some difficult parking. We ask everyone to be patient. There'll be parking down below, I believe the car show's gonna be up on top on the baseball fields and softball fields. Parking will be down below, and up top, and at Jackson Street, and anywhere else, anyone can find it. And please note that it's a short walk from the Berkland and MKG complex to Battis Field, so if you want to park there, that's simply, that's certainly open to parking, and please do so if you'd like. So we appreciate everyone's patience and understanding. Maybe you can take in both events, even the soccer game at the morning at 10, the football game at 2, and also perhaps the car show, which the park has sponsored and is trying to raise money for their event.
It's a show that walks and parks downtown behind Town Hall.
Right, right. You could park at Town Hall, you can park behind the town. We ask that you do not park at the library. That is, is an area for Saturday morning activities at the library, parking is limited to the library, Pier Street is a difficult park, so we ask that folks not park at the library, but...
Also try not to park downtown on Pier Street, just because of all the businesses there.
Yep, absolutely.
Restaurants, if people could park behind Town Hall and wander down, I think that'll be good, too.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Are we all set with audio? Moving on, Mr. Chair. Next on my report is the school calendar 2020-2021. I know this has been posted publicly through social media, and we've had some, some input back from folks in the town, some positive input, some nice suggestions. This is basically sort of a second reading, if you will. It lists two drafts there, but we've included a third draft only because Dr. Melanie Gates had a chance to look at it, and in the third draft, she has asked that her three-day Staff Strong Orientation Program be moved back a week so that those teachers could have some additional time if they wanted to get into their classrooms and set things up. So that has become sort of a draft three, if you will, which is in front of you today, which was, came in too late for, for Dropbox. So the only change between Draft Two and Draft Two Revised is that, that three-day gray August box would go back a week. If you look at the visual...
So this is Draft Two with the Staff Strong here, and Draft Two Revised moves Staff Strong up.
And that would be the only change in those proposed calendars, but these are, again, proposed calendars, and this is less my report and more your discussion, so I would turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair, for the purposes of that discussion.
Yeah, and so just to, so everyone knows, I informed all the members of the committee today, and the superintendent, and, and the business manager, that there, there needed to be another change. Originally, the primary elections for the state were gonna be held on the 15th. That has since been moved, as of last night, around 11 o'clock, the House and Senate decided to move it to the 1st. They, primarily because if there was a conflict, they needed to be able to certify the election in a certain timeframe, so that would fall smack dab on the start of school day. I, I think, as I said before, the superintendent and I are gonna have a conversation with the town clerk, so we want to meet with her and have that conversation. So if, if there's really no objection, I would prefer not to make next meet, next week's meeting the final determination, because that will give us a little more time to have that conversation, and just do it the first meeting in November, if that's okay with everybody. Again, I won't be here next, next meeting, but I do want to make sure we meet with the clerk and have a conversation with her. Brian?
Mr. Chair, when you're discussing with the clerk, that's specific on the, the September 1st, which is the first Tuesday in September?
Yeah.
But the Tuesday before Labor Day, and we were expecting to start our school day there, go Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then have a Friday off, is the thought that we might have to discussion with the clerk, go to school Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
Either that or Wednesday, Thursday. There's a variety of things. The other discussion becomes a conversation with the clerk if, again, you know, in addition to, in addition to the, what we have, the first day of school, we also still have some parking concerns around there, so we want to make sure that she's fine with everything that's going on and the way it's gonna be set up. I think some of the parking concerns will be alleviated.
Yeah, but Mr. Chair, the first day is a convocation day.
Right.
And what we did this year, we had it at the complex.
Yeah.
And it was not an issue, and then the teachers of the high school went back up there, so if the teachers avoid that sort of gym parking lot, and some of the parking that's associated with it, it would probably be successful. We have had primary dates on school dates before.
Right.
Primary dates tend to be a little less, but this is, there's a particular interest in, in the, the primary, the particular, particular primary. So I think that that will gain a lot of interest within the voting public.
Right.
So that may be an issue with, with parking, especially where we have some more limited parking, depending on the weather, certainly.
Right, so that, that's, that's the piece, but we also want to open the discussion up about other pieces, just so everyone knows. So I posted the calendar as we had it last time, to get a wide variety of feedback about different things. I will tell you that I don't feel like I can tell you there is overwhelming support one way or another over certain things. For example, the, the two weeks in December that we had talked about, some people were, some people liked it, some people didn't like it, didn't like it for working families and what they'd have to do for that. There were some people who made comments about ending February and April vacations and going to a March vacation, as we saw from the business managers sent out what would potentially be the dates of MCAS during that time. MCAS generally falls into March dates, so it makes a March vacation much more unlikely because of the dates for MCAS.
Mr. Chair, if I might, we have basically 184 days to get through.
Regardless.
Regardless. So those two days in December during that week will be for professional development for faculty members, so that's important to note, that that 21st and 22nd, although it'll be two full two weeks off for students, faculty are coming those, would be coming those first two days. Part of that is also the important move into a new high school, which is required, and basically contractual now, that we have an MOA with, with the Education Association in the town, so that we provide teachers in time to, time to pack up and unpack, and pack up at the old high school and pack, unpack at the new high school as part of that two-day sort of piece. So I think that's why that's important, and just for some folks, I know there was one person that suggested that, where there was some people that concerned about the two full weeks, but that's where this is coming from. And had we not done the full two weeks, it would really be coming back for two days anyways, and we have to provide those two days for faculty, so that's where, that's at, just by way of a little further explanation.
Mr. Chair? Yes, please.
Did you want to talk about the date before Thanksgiving?
Yeah, I mean, you know, one of the things that I think, you know, people mentioned a wide variety of things, and as I explained to people, that I tried to explain what were contractual pieces that we have and what were not contractual pieces. So when we put together a calendar, one of the things that we do is we adhere to the contractual pieces and make a calendar around that. So for, for instance, we have a contractual piece that says teachers go, can go back the week, a week prior to Labor Day, so we have to honor that, that particular piece. The same with, right now, the, there's a piece about the Wednesday before Thanksgiving is off, and the, the day before Christmas is off also, according to our contracts. So those are just some of the items that we have. And also, I would add, too, that it requires a number of professional development days, number of half-days, so there's a wide variety of pieces in there, and so that's, that's how we form it. I will also add to people, as I've said before, we normally don't start this process till December, and we're starting it now because we want to give as much emphasis as we possibly can. I think we've been consistent for over a year now. When we did last year's calendar, and even every time that we've talked about it, we talked about the fact that we would be starting before Labor Day, and we talked about those two weeks during Christmas because of the, the swap over to the new school. I did have some people ask, "Well, why don't you wait till the following year to open the school," et cetera. I will say this, the building committee visited with other committees who have done a half-year swap or various times in the middle of the year, so we prepped for that. I also believe the timeline that we gave to the town when we sold that building was, you know, inconsistent with what we're talking about here, and I would also say to you, too, as I'm sure Mr. Branigan can attest, there are lots of kids excited about moving to a new high school, and in my mind, to have a building ready to go behind them for an extra six months would be torture for some of those people, especially for the seniors who are very much looking forward to, and for the teachers, too, very much looking forward to graduating from that new building. You know, I just don't see that... building. You know, I just don't see that as really something we can do. Now, we've talked about if there had been delays, but we knew going in that where the delays would come into being would be in areas around steel, construction, foundation, those type of things, and those have not been problems. And so, we've continued. Mr. Oakley?
I'm sure there'd probably be some associated costs with having two buildings sitting there for longer than we had planned. You know, if the new high school's just sitting there, I'm sure there'd be some cost for heating and maintenance and all that, right? So, it wouldn't be a free, free thing just for the calendar's purposes, right?
Would there be a delay on some of the stuff that we're planning on doing? So, that would be a cost. And I would also add, too, that, you know, part of what we, what we built into contracts is that they, that the contractor turnover by certain dates, and there's certain dates that they're supposed to turn over various things. Now, we've been fortunate in that, for example, the turf field, our original estimation wasn't that the turf field was going to open till next year, but the contractor presented us with a plan where he could do both at the same time and be able to open the turf field, as we know now, just for practices and things like that, because it is still a construction site, but it's away from where the construction's actually going on. So, it gives the kids the opportunity to practice in the field and save us buses and things like that. So, in essence, the contractor was actually saving us money, if you will. So, we accepted that to be able to do that. So, that's the tough part.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One of the items on that Thanksgiving one, because I saw that was a heated discussion on social media, that whole piece, and one of the things that we talk about, it's contractual in some of the, well, who did this and who did what? We, the school committee, and the MEA and others negotiate everything in good faith. And one of the things we looked at, we looked at that date, and for a lot of people, that is their big travel date. And it was always a half-day for students, and people really do travel, and their parents would just pull their kids out of school for it, and it's difficult to do that. So, in good faith, the, we, I know, I was in on that negotiation, and I can say, I thought of the bigger picture of all the students, what was best for everybody, including our entire community, including our faculty and staff, and that's why I, myself, thought that that was a good idea to make that official day off, because the amount of travel that the, I don't travel myself, I am local, but others do. And I think that similar with the day before Christmas, Christmas Eve, that day before Christmas, same thing for travel. I mean, out of respect, people do travel for those, those times. So, that was one of the pieces I want, I didn't say anything on social media because then it becomes a discussion, but I was thinking about that a lot. And then, another piece that was thrown out was the bless you Good Friday piece, and I've always said myself, you know, it's, someone said, why is, why is Good Friday, it's, Good Friday's been that way, because I believe if we were, we were predominantly Judeo-Christian for the longest time, and that's the reason why it was always there. But at this point in time, I've said the same thing. What about the other holidays for other religious beliefs? And people take their children out of school for them, and we don't, that's excusable, but someone said, well, why do we have that, that date off? That's something we could visit if we had to. I'm concerned about that, that, well, pre, the September first date for the primary election and losing that day up front, because time on learning before MCAS is a big deal. I really like to have as much time in front. So, looking at that Friday, I'd really like to think about that Friday, to get, get our classes under our belts before those MCAS tests start. Because when they start, they're there. Adding a day at the end of June doesn't help on those MCAS tests.
Just through you, Mr. Chair, Friday, you're talking about, Brian, is it April second, Good Friday?
No, I was thinking more of the Friday I'm talking about now is the fourth of September, the Friday before Labor Day. As much as we'd like to have it long, I just, if we lose the first because of scheduling conflict, I would rather not lose the fourth as well, because going to school two days, I'd rather get those three days in, three full days of real education going on, which would be great. So, just food for thought. That's my thought on that.
Yeah.
I would keep the Good Friday, because a lot of people have that scheduled in their calendar, and I, I'd hate to start messing with that right now.
So, in effect, if that Friday were a school day, the weekend before would be sort of a four-day weekend for students, if you will. And then, the teachers would come in on Tuesday, the first, because we could get the teachers in for convocation on that day, have the primary, and then the students would come in the second, third, and fourth, and have another three-day weekend coming up there, the Labor Day weekend, more traditional every-day weekend. So, that's what you're suggesting, correct, Mr. Chair?
Food for thought, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
How do people feel about it? Mr. Row?
Mr. Chair, that was one thing that I know that parents had talked to me about, that was that Labor Day weekend, because they do like to go away to something new. So, I don't know if we can make it a half-a-day or something like that, maybe put that in there, but it's just an option. Like I said, this is good that we're having this discussion, because we want to get it out to the public and get some feedback on what they would think. Because we have put it out right now, as, you know, you had a four-day weekend there, it would be nice to get some feedback from the public on what they think, if that would be a three-day weekend. The other thing, too, that I was kind of surprised when we put it out, and correct me if I'm ignorant to some of the facts, because one beauty of social media is you get all sorts of feedback, but the feedback was going down different trails. So, I was following different posts and different things, so I might have only gotten half the information. But I was interested that that discussion did focus mainly on the last three vacations, December, February, and April. A lot of people discussing are they should remove those and things like that. I didn't get the impression, anyway, from social media, that there was kickback for starting before Labor Day. I don't know if you, and that was one of the things I know we were, because traditionally, we have not started before Labor Day doing that, and that isn't where the feedback really, I thought we'd get a lot of pushback on that, but I don't feel like we have. And I know we've been talking about surveying the people later, but I just want to make sure that my impression from the threads I was following was, it's more about later in the year, it's not about the start.
I will say this, though, I think if you looked at, people would ask the question around the Labor Day. There was not, you're right, there was not a pushback, but there was the immediate question, this is only happening this year, right, because of the new high school? So, there was a lot of that. So, I think, for the most part, people understood why, given Labor Day's lateness and what was going on, but I think there were a lot of immediate questions afterwards saying, okay, this is only going to happen this year. And I tried to, again, say, yes, this is only about this year, but one of the things that we wanted to do was look at surveying people, because at that point, they would actually have had it, and it makes sense to do it when people have had it, so they've, they've sampled both, if you will.
Correct.
Thank you.
So, I was just thinking, if we, if we can't go on the first, and we go the second and third, and then give up Good Friday?
That would be another option.
Yeah, I think, maybe we could put that out. If you're going to do the religious holidays, you do all or nothing. So, why have just the one day that we do, when there's lots of other holidays that we could do? And now, if they can, parents can still have that long weekend, where they have the four days to go away.
Yep, okay. Greg?
I just, I was also thinking about the two vacations, February, April, and, you know, used to be a parent that was also struggling to find childcare, but, I mean, part of me says, it's going to make it another week in June, too. Like, you have to have childcare because you're ending a week earlier. But I, I think that'd be a good feedback to get from the community, like, in general, like, I don't know if there's a survey we could do about that, like, you know, how do they feel about the vacations?
I think the survey, everything's up, you know, everything's up for conversation. I also think, though, too, you know, a couple of things that I would say about the vacations, both vacations fall on a holiday, so it's, you're not picking up five full days, you're picking up four. The other thing I would say, too, is where those are spaced in the year, there is lots of custodial work that goes on in the life of a school, that keeps the school up to date, that, you know, having those two weeks off with no children around, that they're able to do certain things and get certain things done. So, I think that's, you know, if we change that, we also have to think that we're changing sort of how facilities are managed here and done differently.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, some other food for thought. I know that some, some school regions down the Cape fifteen, twenty years ago decided to try the March break, but they decided to do it regionally, because unfortunately, you have people like Mr. Rowe, who teach in Rockland, and your children would have a week off in March. You'll have the week off in February, the week off in April, but there are a lot of teachers who have children in distant, different districts, and then you're dealing with really three vacations and three pieces, and you'd want to be with your kids or provide childcare for your children. And there are a number of teachers in Middleborough that have, that live in other towns, and their, their young people would be going to school on a different schedule, and I think that that, that week in, in February, week in April, would be losing a lot of folks to three personal days, if you would, et cetera, and would be losing, unless we went as a region, unless it were done with ten or twelve neighboring towns and say, okay, let's all try this for a one-year or a two-year trial basis. There has been no talk of that, I would tell you that, in, in the listserv that comes out from superintendents, most of the listservs lately have been talking about later starts for high school and things such as that, but there's been no talk of this calendar. But I think we, in particular, Middleborough calendar is going to be unique next year. There's no, we have to recognize that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We, we did look, we did look at that at one point in time. I think Taunton, at one time, had, they went to the March schedule, the March vacation, and they eliminated it. They went back to the way it was. And what I think happened was, I think that was the year of the big, a lot of snow, and pretty much they lost the entire February week anyway, because there's always a snowstorm during February vacation, almost always, and they, they found that doing that, they didn't save any days, they actually lost days in the whole bigger scheme of it. But we also looked at it as a, as a school committee back then, way back then, when Bo was here, I think Bo, Bo was on the board at that time, going way back, because we looked at that. We also talked about starting, flipping the schedule, time, start times for schools at that time. We didn't take any action, but we, we talked about it a little bit, there's a lot of research. But it's one of those weird things that, like you said, if, if regionally, everyone did it, and even, it's almost like the state sets up their MCAS tests for the standard February, April schedule.
You're correct.
So, if we did something in March, we would be really kind of changing, we'd be a monkey wrench in the whole gear, when I'd hate to see that happen, trying to get MCAS done with, with a vacation in the middle of it.
Right.
Greg?
Mr. Chair, there are also, the two vacations, February and April, there are a lot of moving parts, not only with facility rentals, with events outside the high school, with professional development for teachers. There's a lot of things that happen during those weeks that don't involve students, that are opportunities out there as well. So, I'm not sure we can, I like the idea of using them as an emergency, oh, no, there's an awful snow week, we can look and take away February. But one thing I was kind of looking at here is, we were talking about the Good Friday or the Friday before. Could we, I know we moved the half-a-days into March to kind of provide a break, but could we move those half-a-days to Friday, September fourth, and then it would be April second? That...
That opens up possibility.
Yeah, and that would reduce our end date to, it looks like, June eighteenth, which gives you over a week, then, of wheelroom in the end, and also provides, you know, the opportunity for those parents to get out and travel if they need to be for that weekend.
And also, Mr. Chair, there are religious activities that go on, for example, at the Kermit Catholic Collaborative, they have Stations of the Cross, that the student choir sings at, and the students, the confirmation classes are required to attend, and that's an afternoon, that's a three or three-thirty event. So, we might get maybe less pushback, pushback from the Kermit Catholic Collaborative or other churches who have afternoon activities on that Good Friday day. Just, just a thought, that's, that's piggybacking with your idea that maybe that's a release day, early release, and that would not conflict with any of those activities.
So, if we did that, that would move it back to the twenty-first? Greg?
I like that idea.
Okay. And again, the only downside to that is, just so we're aware, is March is a long month, which we said from the very beginning, so.
So, we're slowly developing a new draft here. So, now, we're talking about going to school on September fourth, correct? Having the first off for, or having it a convocation day being the first, students coming back the second, third, and fourth, the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, with an early release on Friday, September fourth, which would be my mother's ninetieth birthday. And then, the, on April second, the traditional Good Friday would be replaced by an early release day, so that students could then take off with families and/or participate in religious activities within the community.
And then, the two, these days would be left out of March, and March would be a regular full month.
Take the ones out of March.
With MCAS and everything being played that way.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Unless, before you make any changes to that calendar over there, unless we looked at the day before the October twelfth weekend and the day before Memorial Weekend, and we took those two and put them back in March, so that the doldrums of March would have at least those two early releases. I mean, we wouldn't have that half PD for the students on those two days, but it would make March a little more bearable?
I would say...
I would say...
I was going to say, I think it makes, in some respects, it would make more sense to move the half-day in January, given that we're just coming off two weeks of, of school to March, and doing it that way. So, there wouldn't be the extra long weekend in January.
So, move that to mid-March, the nineteenth?
Yeah.
Of March?
Yeah.
You'll have one, one day in March?
Yeah, one of the days in March, just to...
Do it that. And then, keep the...
Other stuff the way it was.
Ten, nine?
Yep.
Early release, and keep the last day of school as an early release, correct?
Correct, keep five-twenty-eight.
And now, the last day of school would be the twenty-first.
And five-twenty-eight.
That'd be eighteen.
Eighteen.
So, one, two, three, four, five, six. There has to be six of them. Six early release.
Did you get the May twentieth?
I did. So, I have September fourth, March nineteenth.
Yes, sorry.
April second.
So, that moves it back to the...
Going back to October ninth, sorry, then April twenty-eighth, and the last day of school.
That's it.
Correct?
Mr. Chair, as a teacher, and I don't know if you guys would agree, but having the last day of school on a Friday is great, so you're not, not coming back for one day.
As a parent?
No.
As large a movement, no, just...
No, but we do have to also realize that the reality is, we'll probably have at least one or two snow days.
Or wind day.
Or a windy day. Well, you know, Hanover, Weymouth, Duxbury, there are a number of communities today that did not have school.
Mostly Cape.
Most of the Cape, was it? Okay.
Some bad weather.
And we were fortunate, because I think we've had the heavy windstorms in the last couple of years that have taken most of the weak trees out, and I don't think we had the winds that the coast had, so.
We've thinned the herd in Middleborough.
We've thinned the herd.
Okay, so, any further discussion about the calendar?
Yeah. Maybe put it back out there?
Absolutely.
And big letters revised or something, so that people know and let people see it?
And again, since we have the back-to-back meeting this week, I think it would make sense to push it to November. That gives people more time to look at things.
And through you, Mr. Chairman, the eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth of August, you're okay with that, Dr. Gates?
Yeah, very much so.
Staff Strong, starting earlier that week, or the week before, just so that those faculty members can then have additional time, whether they want to set up their classroom or sort of digest the three days of Staff Strong? There's a lot of information that's presented in those three days, so.
Mr. Steve?
I just would like to suggest, is there a way on the, I didn't, I don't, I'm not social media savvy, but on the forums that we did post that to, could we post a few of those reasons why the February, April makes sense from, because, I mean, I didn't realize some of those things.
We have been.
Yeah.
We have been posting.
Okay. So, I think the fact that, you know, the regional thing, you know, the MCAS, you know, all that stuff is, is good news, it's good to get that out there.
And a lot of it comes from people's questions, and the questions have been answered, and make sure that they, for the most part, I can't think of any ones that I've seen that haven't been answered. I've sort of tried to wander around and go to places, and people ask questions, make sure they're answered.
And would you also respond to the, I know we got a couple of emails?
Yeah, so, all the emails, so, just so everyone knows, I also put out there that if people, if, people obviously could come here and provide input, as we always do. I've also asked, said people could email the entire school committee, how they could do that. I said, but if they just preferred, they could email me, and I would forward it to you. So, everybody, everybody who sends me an email gets a response back.
Okay.
And in the response, I've said I'm forwarding it all to, to all of you.
All right.
And in most cases, if, if people have had questions in their email, then I tend to answer their questions, much like this, and explain why there's certain things that we can do and can't do.
All right.
And go from there.
And, Mr. Chair, through you, I only play an advisory role in this, in, from my standpoint, but I have not received any correspondence with regard to the calendar at all. So, just, just what you've sent me.
Rich?
Do I have it right that we're going to propose a, a new calendar soonish, and we'll put that online, and as, as soon as we have it, but that we won't actually be talking about it here at School Comm until the November meeting because of the back to back... talking about it here at School Comm until the November meeting because of the back-to-backs? Is that right?
No, to be honest with you, I'll still put it on next meeting.
Okay.
For a brief discussion like we did here.
Sure.
So that there's another opportunity for people to discuss it.
Sure.
Again, if people want to come down next week and discuss it, they can. But it just makes sense, since we've made some, what I view as significant changes, to let it be out there for a little while, and give people more opportunity.
Mr. Chair, I'll mention it, the selectmen's meeting on Monday, that it's out there. Hopefully we'll, that we'll be discussing but not taking action until November on this.
And, and Ms. Hickey, through, through you, Mr. Chair, Ms. Hickey and I tomorrow will go through our notes. We've both taken notes, go through our notes, make the changes, have Ms. Gagnon, administrative assistant, make those changes. And it'll be out there tomorrow in, in my communication to you, which I do every Friday, and we can, you can then send that out.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the plan.
Nice. Thank you.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, I would love it too if we could somehow get out there the, the childcare options for the days that we're disrupting that are not out there, just so parents understand that we are. It, it is, it's.
That's a good idea.
It's difficult to understand, but make sure that we have all the contact information and who they need to talk to about if they do need additional childcare through the services that are provided, where they can go, how they can get that, and.
Sure.
Any way that we can help them do that, because it, it is a disruption. It is. And I am sympathetic to the parents, and I'm trying to figure out what I'm going to do with my own elementary kid, because I'll be in school, and we'll, we'll sort it out. But it, it's nice to know all the options that we can have.
And again, you know, we're trying to give as, as far notice as we possibly can, so we're giving close to a year, so people can get pieces in place.
Mr. Chair, any input from our student representative?
Does that work for you?
Any thoughts, Natalia?
That works.
It works?
All right, there we go.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Seeing none, thank you. No, I'm sorry, it's still your report. You gave it to me though, so.
Thank you. Back to me, Mr. Chair. We have a budget update from Sarah Hickey.
I'm just going to talk about two things. I sent out an email last week to principals and directors that we're having our October budget freeze effective the 25th. The freeze on purchasing from the operating budget with the exception of essential spending. So as Superintendent Lynch likes to say, the supplies that are needed for the beginning of school should be bought by now. But I did give the principals two weeks to get some additional things into me. The second thing I wanted to talk about, if you see down, there's a donation from McLean Hospital, you're going to see that more frequent. I wanted to explain that in the past, McLean had given us a sum of money, and it was set up as a grant, and it was used by the Family Resource Center. And McLean has changed how they're doing that. So instead of giving us the money upfront, we need to spend, and then they'll reimburse us. So in order to do that, we, we couldn't do that from an empty account. So I have put the McLean into the donation account. So we'll be spending out of the donation account, and then they will be reimbursing us, and it will come through school committee every time they reimburse.
Mr. O.
Through you, I wondered what, what is the, first of all, that's super generous of McLean to do that. And I wonder what is the, you know, how mu, how much do they donate to us? Is this, is this the total, or is this one of many, or?
This is one of many. I think it's somewhere, I apologize, I don't have the exact number, but it's in excess of $20,000 a year.
Yeah.
So it is, it is very generous of them, and we appreciate it. It, it brings a lot of good things to Middleborough.
And Mr. Chair, if I could just ask a follow-up, it's a, I think I understood, you said it's a grant, basically. And what is the purpose that they state that the money is to be used for?
It, it gets used in a number of different ways. So Megan Quirk, who runs the Family Resource Center, has in the past put survey out to parents. This reimbursement that we're seeing right now was for a program, a guest speaker that came in and spoke to families in the evening. There's a substantial amount of money, and I might get this wrong, so somebody who remembers better than I might help out, but there's a substantial amount of money that they donate to for us to have an online counseling presence.
Got it.
That's that interface, interface piece, that's for every Middleborough resident?
Yep, that's awesome.
Yeah, that's about $13,500.
Cool. Thank you very much.
But they support a, a program for non-traditional parents, whether it be grandparents or foster parents and the like. And they have special evenings where they do some training with those folks, and grandparents raising children and things such as that that need that extra support. And it comes through the Family Resource Center to them, and it's pretty prescriptive in terms of what they're looking for and their needs. So Megan Quirk does a really nice job in the Family Resource Center coordinating these efforts and applying to these grants. And she has really been aggressive in the last couple of years, and, and really it's, it's come back to us, and multitudes of good grant money. All set? Okay. Thank you. The next item on, on my agenda is just a mention of special town meeting and some results, both favorable with regard to the school system. And I thank those of you who were, who were in attendance and made the quorum the other night. Article two was a town-wide article, but it was basically a response from the town manager and the selectmen to post an additional $50,000 going to the school budget, because after our budget negotiations last, last year and the approval of our school budget, they went into negotiations with the, they were in negotiations with the police, and the police settled a contract which brought their detail rate from $34 an hour, and we had figured $36 an hour, a reasonable amount, to $50 an hour. And we have two school safety officers that we pay out of our budget. They pay, this police department pays for the two, two school resource officers, we pay for the two school safety officers, and they increased our budget by $50,000 with the understanding that we did not have that in the budget to cover for the full year. And that was, thank you very much to Bob Noons and the folks at the town level for, for putting that in the budget, because otherwise we would have had to transfer monies out of somewhere else in the operational budget to pay for those two school safety officers, which are part of that school safety agreement that we've had. Very effective, and it works very well. We have four, four full-time police officers, armed police officers with badges in our buildings, in five buildings every single day throughout the year, which is a real plus. And hopefully it's comforting to parents and students to have that, those police officers around. And, and it's great for the relationship. We're fortunate that we have Sergeant John Graham, who is also a parent in the system, but he's also somebody who's all over the place in the district, and in charge of sort of that wing, if you will, of the police department, under the direction of Chief Joe Perkins, and we certainly appreciate that. That was Article two. Article 16 was merely an effort on our part to set up an additional revolving account for the school system, so that we can then take in enrichment funds and spend money out of enrichment funds, so that we can then basically take the operational budget, take some money out of the, the revolving fund and put it into the operational budget for other purposes. So, and the example of that is the childcare program that we've just signed on to, which, if the proposal works as it stated, will bring approximately almost nearly $500,000 in the next three years to the school system that we can use to pay teacher salaries, supply line items, et cetera, et cetera. So that was Article 16, and that passed unanimously. So both of those passed, and we're pleased with that. So that was the result of the special town meeting. Those are the two articles that we had sort of any something to do with. Article 16 was just the school department. Article two was part of the bigger picture, but both passed with flying colors. And we're very appreciative, as usual, to the town of Middleborough for their support for the Middleborough Public Schools. And that concludes my report for this evening, unless there are any questions.
Before the superintendent concludes his report, I did want to point out to the committee one bit of annoying news that has to deal with the foster, the foster care reimbursement for transportation. The state has allowed reimbursement for last year's foster care transportation.
By application.
By application, provided that you have consent of town meeting to do it. Unfortunately, we can't apply for it, because we just had our town meeting, and the warrant had closed after they announced the change.
And you have to have your application in by March 1st, which is prior to the next town meeting.
Now, we can have a conversation, and I think we should, and so what I wanted to bring up with everyone, if no one has any problems, I would like to have a conversation. I would ask Brian to join me at the selectmen and ask that they hold a town meeting in order to recoup this money, because.
We, so the town meeting is required to vote on a memorandum of understanding between the town and the district and the state. And I have sent a copy of the memorandum of understanding to town manager Bob Noons, and explained to him, what you need to be aware of is that the, we're allowed to claim up to eight quarters in arrears. So my current plan is if there is no reason for another town meet, what I said to Bob Noons in my email was, please have this just in case there's a need for a town meeting between now and the annual town meeting. But my current plan is to have that in the annual town meeting this spring, and then claim for fourth quarter of FY19, and then all of FY20 to.
But I would say that that was additional information that came in after your initial conversation.
Right.
That was something that was a result of people saying, what? What are you doing?
Well, it, it, I, I have to tell you, it was, this information was presented to a group of school business managers, and it wasn't really an angry mob, because we're nice and polite and professional people. But the group that came in to present to us this wonderful thing that none of us could take advantage of, they thought they were bringing up something good, and, and there were no pitchforks or torches around, but.
But it was a tough room.
It was a tough room.
It was a tough room.
Yes.
The only reason why the state has done this is because they've realized that some communities like ours, because I made the motion, that we did not willingly accept the provisions of the McKinney-Vento bill. And that was how it was worded, the motion was worded, and I worded it specifically that way, because under Proposition Two and a Half, which was accepted, I believe, in 1981, if a, if a, the state imposes anything on a community, and the community willingly accepts it, they can, they will accept no further funds for it, if they willingly accept it. We did not willingly accept McKinney-Vento. What the state is doing is they're finding out that right now, there are communities like ours, that if we go back to 2011, or 12, whatever it was, 2011, and we started adding it up and sent them a bill, they would by law have to pay this bill. They're afraid. That's why they only want to look back eight quarters. They want us to accept this memorandum that says, we'll only look back eight quarters. They, you know, would I look a gift horse in the mouth? No. The problem is, is they should be looking back from the beginning, and they didn't. They should have done it. I said we should have gone to Suzanne Bump a long time ago, the state auditor, and got a ruling on it. We never got a ruling on it, because nobody, we, I, the cheese stands alone sometimes with this, when I argue with this. I've argued and argued and argued that we should have gone after this so many times. It, it's just disappointing that the state wants to do this now, but the state hasn't got any money to do anything else. I mean, they, they've talked about adding a billion dollars to, a billion and a half dollars to things, and I don't even know where they're going to get it from. They don't even, they don't even know where they're going to get it from. They're going to borrow or take it out of the rainy day account. But I'm, I'm a little concerned, because if we have a special town meeting, it's going to cost the town money, and that too should be borne onto the state. If the state is requiring us to do something that is requiring us to spend money to get money that they owe us, that under Proposition Two and a Half would once again be an unfunded mandate that they're forcing upon us in order to get our money back. If they can't meet our requirements, unless they'd like to set aside our charter and allow the Board of Selectmen to make the vote, which we could probably do, we could ask our state legislators to consider that under special legislation, then that would be done. But to turn around and just accept eight quarters, two years versus eight years of it, when we were paying 125,000, 140,000, we had budgets, we were looking for more money some of those years, we could be looking at a million and change coming back versus 200. But I'm, I guess I'm not looking at a gift horse in the mouth, maybe 170, I don't know what the numbers are, without really looking at the last year and the year before, but it really bothers me that the, the state's willing to do this for us, and then ties your hands around something. It's, it's kind of, and it's, 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 is it only the homeless, or is it going to be a complete McKinney-Vento?
Well, and just so everyone, it applies to the foster care. And just to correct one piece, Brian, the auditor did rule on this, and this is why they came, this is the plan they came up with. She did not rule on a specific period in time. The superintendent and I actually attended a meeting with the auditor, and she explained to us what was happening. As a matter of fact, it was a question that somebody had brought up, and the auditor responded to it directly. And the, again, MASC made the point that, you know, again, like you said, a lot of times the auditor is the person that we have to go to and we have to get money. So I don't disagree with anything.
No, I know, I know. I just, it's, it's my, it's my box I've been on for nine years now, because it just, it came out of our pockets. And at one point in time, when we were housing families in hotels in our district, it was very difficult. I mean, difficult for the students alone, much less the cost of, of transportation. It was, it was, it was.
Through you, Mr. Chair, you can pass that soapbox under me, because I was the one that got up in that day in the hill, and I was the one that asked the question of Suzanne Bump.
But the, the other thing too, that, that bothersome too, is when Suzanne Bump audited the account, they, they found out for the first time that there was money federally that the state had to apply for in order to get it back for the school districts. Because as, as we've talked about before, I personally had conversations with the DCF commissioner about this, and pointed it out, and was told, Rich, if there was money, we would reimburse the, the towns. And I don't think they looked, you know, I'm not blaming the commissioner, please, because the commissioner's not the one that runs a grant, a federal grant. It's different people. But I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, we've had this conversation over and over again, and we've had it at the highest levels of state government. And then the auditor comes, and they come up with this, and, and to me, it's just a ridiculous way that they presented it, because, again, whether knowingly or unknowingly, they, they don't realize the cycle that we go through in order to have things approved. And for the vast majority of us, our, our annual special town meetings had already been established, and it just gets to be ridiculous. Sorry, that's my rant. Thank you very much. MSBA update? Brian, did you want to talk a little about that?
Moving along, we're at, what, 29% at this point, complete on the, the structure. Only 1% in items within our contingency, so that's a little over 1% contingency being spent. That's, that's a real good position to be in. They caught up with their schedule. Then we got rain. So I don't know how it's affected the schedule, but steel has been still going up. As Mr. Pittsley was showing, the auditorium is going up, which I thought was really cool that he did. The, both of, the webcams are still going. It's, it's awesome to see. Students are using, for educational purposes, the fields. I know my, my, my students have been using it for band practice and rehearsal. So I mean, it's, and the track has been using, the, the cross country's been using the track for training. So it's, you know, I don't think there's been, other than for maybe administration, that much of a hassle for students. I think they kind of roll with it. Would you say you kind of roll with it? Do you roll with it? Yeah, which is good. I mean, that's a good thing. People shaking their heads, yeah, which is great. So all things considered, they're moving along. And every time I look at that camera, I see a little bit more being done, and I can't wait to see the facade start to go on that building. And the goal is to have it closed by winter, so they can continue the inside.
They were there on Saturday.
Yeah, yep.
Any questions about MSBA? Then moving on, the chair and today, the motion for consent agenda.
So moved.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Again, the, it's just a reminder, November 6th is the, the piece. I apologize, I did not put it on the agenda as an action item, but I'm going to bring it up right now. Since I am the only one going, the chair would like a motion to make me the delegate to, for the school committee to the MASC committee.
So moved.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you. We don't have any policy updates. And then we'll go on. We do have two contracts to approve tonight. The first being the secretary's contract, it was in your packet. The secretary is, as we've talked about every other meeting, it's the same parameters, same various pieces that we had. If no one has any objection, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Very second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. The next is.
Opposed, it's unanimous. The next is the custodial contract.
Motion approved.
Do I hear a second? Discussion, again, same parameters, nothing major. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I want to thank those who worked on the secretary's contract and the custodian's contract, it's great how, I appreciate that you've spread it out a little bit versus just you and I doing it, with all the different members having a piece of that, which was great. It's not a lot, it's a lot of work, and so it's good, it's good that you get to experience it too, from both sides. Sometimes you, you might be on the other side someday, but I think it's a, it's a great experience, and I'm glad you did that, and thank you for taking the time, because I've been really busy.
No, and I appreciate it, I appreciate everybody who helped out. With that, the chairman intends to have a motion to allow them to sign both contracts.
So moved.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I will sign both. Thank you to everybody. I appreciate everybody's hard work and participation. I also do want to thank all the administrators, in addition to Sarah and Brian, and as we talked about, Dr. Gates helped out, but all the administrators met with us to have conversations about what they wanted to see in contracts, and it was very open and good discussions.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion moved, motion to approve the out-of-state field trip for Middleborough High School to Newport Mansions, 11, 15, 19.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, other than, I believe this is around the Great Gatsby for English class. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. I'd like to take the time to welcome all our new hires, one new hire, excuse me, and thank the people who are resigning for their hard work and dedication to Middleborough. And last but not least, does anyone have anything before I take a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, when will we have an update on the high school schedule?
I think that will be next meeting, we just have a brief update for the high school schedule piece.
Next Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can talk about that.
Awesome.
If Mr. Brandonigan can't be there, I'll at least ask him just to put together some flyer so we can add it to the Dropbox. Anybody else? I will not be here next week, so Ms. Janess will take over. The chair intends to have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous, thank you everybody, and we'll see you next Thursday night.